Yep.
You ready there? All right.
Ready.
Call this meeting to order is 5:03, January 22. And item two, information item consultant ASA provide governing board an overview of the search process. We have Dr. Clement here.
Dr. Nick Clement.
Clement. If you'd like, we can introduce. While you're doing that, if you'd like for us to go around the table here and introduce ourselves.
Please.
My name's Keith Ware. I'm the president and of the governing board. Native Yuma, went through public schools here in Yuma, small business owner, and I've been on the board for three years now.
I'm Jeff Stoner, and we're newly elected. This is, we had our first meeting just this last couple of weeks ago. I am a 50-year Yuma native myself, so I've been through the schools, kindergarten through college, and then a little bit here. I'm also a small business owner and got my family, my children, my grandchildren, and we're all here.
David Abara, a retired police sergeant, 33 years of service, a veteran, served in Iraq and Afghanistan, one tour in Iraq, three tours in Afghanistan, United States CBs and D O S, and I just kind of left.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
I'm Corey Rico, also newly elected from Yuma, left, said I would never come back, and I've been back now for 17 years. Grew up in District One. My parents were both educators in District One, and now my children are in District One. And I work at a big agriculture company that's based out of here, but we're all over the world. Previous social worker, now turned HR, so.
I'm Dwayne Shepard, associate superintendent. This is my 16th year here in District One, my 39th year in education. I've been here in Yuma for 27 years.
Susie Alka, associate superintendent. I was born in Yuma and left and came back in eighth grade and have sort of been here ever since. It's my 17th year at District One and.
Jamie Sheldon, superintendent, 38 years in Yuma, 17 in District One, eight as a teacher, then I went to the high school district for 21 years, and then now nine as a superintendent, and I'm going to be officially retired here at the end of the, end of June.
Mr. Manuel, HR director, and I've been here 13 years with Yuma School District One.
Wow.
Yeah.
Dennis Pond, CFO, been with District One for eight years.
That's awesome.
Moita Navarro, executive assistant to the board and Mr. Sheldon superintendent, and I've been with District for 23 years, and I'm here to serve you guys. Happy to do so.
And we know who runs the show.
And if we're smart, we let her.
So I'm going to stand up. Been in the car for three hours and just not, I don't travel like I used to. I get up in the morning thinking I'm 30, and then something slaps me in the face and reminds me I'm 71. Just like getting a, two days ago, I got my haircut, and, you know, I'm thinking young, and she says, can I get those old guy hairs for you? The years and the. Didn't happen when I was 30. I am honored to be invited to your home, and that's how I view this process. This is your home, okay? I grew up in a small town in Michigan near Kalamazoo, and my goal in life was to get invited to go to somebody's home because, one, I got to ride a different bus, and, two, I got a break from my mom, and we both needed a break. Because of distances, you just didn't go to their house for an hour, you stayed overnight. So I'm honored to be invited to your home, and you know your home. You know the context of your home much better than I do. I'm here to serve you, and I work for you, okay? And when I make a recommendation, that's what it is. It's a recommendation. And I had the honor of being in this profession for 40 years. I started as a special ed teacher in Michigan. I moved out to Clark County in Las Vegas and was a special ed teacher in a small school, coach, athletic director, and then moved to Tucson because my brother was an engineer, building the water treatment facility for the CAP project. So I needed to be closer to family and started as an AP in Floyd Wells, and found a home 30 years, and then I retired. And, you know, it just wasn't, I was ready to retire, but you can only walk the dog so many times. When the dog starts to hide the leash. And my wife wasn't quite ready to have me around as much as retirees. So I do some work with NAU. I have an endowed position with NAU, which allows me to do projects I like to do. For example, one of the projects is we, I have a foundation that donates book vending machines to schools. And I, like I said, I get to do things that I like to do. I also do some work, in the last nine years, I've been working as a search consultant. Now I'm with ASA, and I've been with, I've worked, done some work for ASBA, and it's all on an individual contract basis. And I also do some strategic planning. For example, I did the, I facilitated the strategic plan for Steady about six or seven years ago. And I did, last year did the search for Somerton, and last year did the search, facilitated the search for Sentinel, Dateland, and Allen High School. That was interesting because they all were at the same time and that sort of thing. And then about six, seven years ago, I did the search, I facilitated the search for Yuma Union High School District. So I'm here, like I said, to answer questions, to be your consultant, but I'm not your legal counsel. I spent nine years as a superintendent and got in trouble a number of times because I didn't call legal counsel. So I am not your legal counsel, and I will remind you of that throughout this process. I'm here to facilitate, not insert myself in your decision-making. My job is to give you information, to do due diligence, to provide you information, but not insert myself in that very important decision that you're going to make, okay? So let me do a quick overview of this process. And there are two goals. One is an outcome goal, and that is select the best, highest qualified, best fit superintendent to lead Yuma Elementary School District One forward. There's little things. I love the fact that you capitalized one. You take advantage of that, you know? From someone who has not been in your district, I pick up on those little things. I picked up on that, okay? And then the process goal is transparency and stakeholder input to the degree that you can, and there's that balance. For example, during the application period, an applicant wants to know that it's a confidential process. They know that once, if they get to that interview, their name's going to get out there, but you want the best pool, and you don't want somebody not applying because you can't guarantee the confidentiality of that process. So there's that balance between transparency and doing a legal process. And, you know, I'm so glad that, well, I'll talk about that a little bit, about your staff and their involvement in the process. So let's go to the next slide, okay? These are recommendations. I, and through my experience, I want it to be a smooth process. That doesn't mean you're not going to have really good discussions and that sort of thing, but I don't want a glitch that happens because of open meeting law or something else. So these are our recommendations. In no way do I want you to think that I'm preaching at you, okay? But here are my recommendations, that during this process, and it starts tonight, the search process starts tonight, here's my recommendation that as a board, you practice a moratorium on contact with the media and allow me to be your spokesperson, okay? Just for the search. And if you do get contacted by the media, you're going to have my, you know, contact your superintendent, he'll get me involved, and I will be your spokesperson, just for that, the search. I don't mean to get involved in your PIO, but just for the search, that's what I'm recommending. And the reason is it supports that transparency and reception, and we get the same message. It's a messaging communication out there, okay? I also recommend that you do not contact potential applicants or finalists prior to or after the screening and the formal interview, okay? And the reason for that is you want every applicant to feel and to experience a fair process, and if you contact someone to say, you know what, we just opened, why don't you consider putting an application in? They might perceive that as now they have the edge, okay? So my recommendation, now, if you have someone that you would like me to contact, that's my job. My job is to recruit, and I'll act on your behalf, and I have a whole spiel that I say, you know, I don't even mention the board. I just say, hey, we have an opening. Would you consider applying? Here's how you apply. So any questions on the guidelines? And again, I don't mean to preach, but I'll preach. I'm trying to, I, I take the position of worst-case scenario. I'm overcautious, and you'll find that as we move through this, okay? Because I, I don't want any post-hire legal action to come back on the board or the district. Okay, next slide. So here is, here are the phases. We are at phase one, where you're going to look at the profile, the timeline, and hopefully approve the posting as an action item. This allows us to work with, I work for you as a consultant and have ASA backing me up and providing the infrastructure to make everything happen, okay? So if we do approve tonight, we'll get the posting by Friday, and the posting goes on the ASA website, the double ASA website, that's the American Association of School Administrators, it goes on Indeed, and I get these blocks these days.
LinkedIn?
Pardon?
LinkedIn?
Yes, yes. So I had that name in my head, and then.
I do this on the daily, and I just can't keep all the job boards straightened out.
So it goes on a lot of job boards that ASA has a subscription to that is, you, once you agree to the contract, there are no add-ons. There are no, well, here's a, you know, you wanted a heated steering wheel? I'm the worst. Any, I, when I go into car dealers, they know. It's like, I buy way more than I need, and now it's become, that same thing happens in Verizon. I walk out of Verizon with an iPad and stuff I never needed. We don't do that to you. Your contract is, all the benefits are part of the contract. So there is a period of time, you were suggesting or recommending about a month that applicants can apply, and all of that, that application goes to ASA. So that takes any work for your HR out of it. In that, that's not to say that your HR isn't important in this process, we just, we're taking that work. And once we get to that phase three, I will bring hard copy of every completed application and multiple copies. So let's say there's 20 applications. You're going to get a folder, hard copy with 20 applications. We don't do, I don't do a pre-screening. I don't, I show you, I bring all the applications. I will do a summary that takes the red flags, as it were. Did they meet minimum requirements? Have they been bought out or left the position? I will have a summary, a spreadsheet with every applicant and things that are in the application, but I, I don't necessarily want you hunting and pecking to find some of those red flags, okay? I will also do diligence on every application and bring you any information that is verifiable and is relevant to the search, okay? So we screen in exec session, and I'll get to that in a minute, and then you'll select applicants to interview. And once you do that, they become candidates, and we move to phase four, where the board interviews with selected candidates, and then it moves to phase five, where the board does a second interview. And I'm recommending that you have a community forum that I facilitate for your finalists, and then you go back into exec session, deliberate, and then come out. I'm recommending you come out in phase five on that same day and make your selection to enter into negotiations, which is phase five. Once you go to that, where you selected a finalist to enter into negotiations, then I step out and your legal counsel steps in, okay? So those are the six phases. Any questions on the phases?
I just have a, like, how solidified are the dates? Just because like the board interview with selected candidates, I'm in, like, out of the country for work, and so I just didn't know if there's any.
So those were recommended dates when we get to the next agenda item?
Okay.
We'll.
I mean, if needed, I can join via Zoom, but I just wanted to.
They're tentative right now.
Are any of these that are on screen on paper for us to take with us?
Pardon?
Any of your screenshots, or is any of this on paper for us to take?
Yes, I.
We can print them out and give them to you before you leave. Thank you.
Yeah.
So understanding our timeline, because we are already at the end of the month, and because I really want to be able to accommodate having you present, pushing it a week, two weeks, you see any issue. Are you going to be out of town for more than a week?
No, I'm just gone from, I'm in Brazil, which is four hours ahead, so I, again, I could, I'm gone from like that Sunday to that Friday.
You can rub it in where you're going.
Yeah.
I'm not going to a cool place there. I'm going to a very small town. It'll be nice.
Pushing a week or two, we have that much flux in the schedule.
So I brought my calendar. When we get to that action item on the posting, let's talk about that and change dates if we need to. And then you'll be voting on the entire posting, which includes the timeline, and you're not locked into that. We want to keep the timeline, but if something comes up, like I had a client that we had to change the timeline after they approved, so there'll be a little abstract that says date subject to change.
Right, okay. So you'll go through this. The phases are, you're going to get, you're going to post the position. You will collect all the applicants, those that are qualified in their entirety, be brought to the board, with a summary of red flags and validation of certificates and education and training, and then the board gets the opportunity then to review those.
Yes.
Okay.
And every application that is a complete application, I'll bring, even though that there may be some applications that they didn't meet the minimums, but I don't, I just bring them to you.
Those will be flagged though, correct?
Yeah. And then I do a spreadsheet that will let you know, okay? Okay, next, next slide. So this is just, this is a decision model that I found in doing the searches that boards want to know. They want to know which part of the search is in exec session and which part is open session where you vote. So I've done it by phases. Today, you'll have an agenda item where you'll approve the timeline, questions, community, and the questions are the ones that are going to be on the application. And you'll have an agenda item to approve the community survey. Phase two is a process. Phase three, in exec session, you'll review, discuss, and screen candidates, application materials. Then that same meeting, you'll come back into open session and make motions to invite an applicant to become a candidate. You'll also, I'll present the survey results, and you'll get a hard copy of the survey results, and I'll do a summary of your survey results before you go into your screening meeting. Phase four, the interviews, we recommend be done in exec session, and we'll do all the notification that somebody has the right to have their interview done in open, we'll do all that work. Then in open session, you'll select finalists to go to the second interview. They go from an applicant to a candidate to a finalist. The community forum, if you're attending, that will be posted as similar to going to a conference or, you know, that, the community forum is not a meeting. It's not a, it's not an open meeting, it's not a study session, it's, it's a community forum. Then in phase five, you'll interview in, you'll interview in exec session and then make your decision on the finalists you want to enter into negotiations with in open session. And then what happens, you'll also vote to designate a board member to be the liaison with legal counsel. We kind of step, we do step out of the process, and then, once a contract is agreed upon by your finalist, it's brought back to the board for a final vote. And my recommendation is to have that final vote as close to your selection as possible. So that's the decision matrix. Let's go to the next slide. Questions?
There seems to be a lot in the next few action items, and I don't know if it's the process, talking about approving this, the community survey and things like that. I assume you're going to provide samples of that for us to review. There is a lot in here without any backup information to look at, and in the phase, each of those, that first phase has got a lot of.
So I did email the template for the community survey, and the posting has all that other information that we're going to go through, and you should have a copy of that.
Is that what's in here?
Yeah. Yeah.
But I'll make sure I believe you have the template for the community survey.
Yep. Well, you have it too. It's on that search report. Yes, it's the third attachment.
Do you want us to run some copies? Do you want to run some copies?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this the survey?
Let me see. I can print it, yeah. How many pages, Monica, real quick? I'll print one and then we can use staples.
Is what she's printing, including the community survey?
Yeah, she's printing the community survey. Looks like it's nine pages.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's electronic.
Is that the one from yours?
Survey Monkey.
It's similar to the one they did last time.
We send you the link. And then you can push it out to any community members, parents. And then all the data goes to ASA. And then what I'll do is in advance, I'll send you the entire results. And then prior to the screening, I'll present a summary and a PowerPoint. And you'll get that PowerPoint too. But and then the idea of the survey is for your community to identify the top qualities. They would like in a superintendent. And there is an open ended part where they talk about strengths and challenges for the the next superintendent.
Nice. So Mr. Schell, is that something that you're going to be able to get to the principals, to be able to get to their teachers, to get to the parents?
Oh, we'll push it out to every parent through Parent Square. We'll push it out on.
Oh, you know how to get ahold of us.
Yes.
I give them those dates every day.
We'll push it out.
From all schools.
As part of our our monthly newsletter, there'll be a link to it. We have what 3,700 or almost 4,000 people that open that up every month. We'll put it out on Facebook, Instagram, every available.
Now, that's my next, you know, obviously we want to target the current students and families, but then we want the families outside of that that are in our district as well.
Right.
We want to be able to hit them as well.
And that'll be the that'll be the social media.
Are we planning on putting it in the paper? Are we planning on putting it on?
We can put it in the paper. We'll do a media release.
A new segment?
Yeah.
Radio?
Well, I don't know about radio.
I was going to say, I try the radio routing.
It doesn't work too well.
This is probably not the.
Social media is the best way to get the larger media.
Not worth the money, I guess, is whatever.
We will also provide the district with the link to the application. So that it's it's on the career page. At ASA. But the link will take them right directly to the application. It'd be one click.
In the past, you have other districts that have added to their website that link as well under their employment page?
Pardon?
In the past, have you worked with other districts that have added that link to their actual school website as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Just like the survey, the more people that know about the, you know, the word of mouth. I mean, we're we're looking at both recruiting locally and statewide and nationally.
So the application link will go to the media outlets? Because that's something that you're not wanting us to use. You just said for us not to do that, to send them to you.
Oh, the. So when a potential applicant clicks on that link, it goes directly to ASA.
Right.
What I'm asking the board not to do is have their have any kind of direct contact with an applicant.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. So you don't want.
So don't send it to an individual.
Yeah, there's no there's no reason for me to have access to that link to send it to somebody. We need to let the media do that or let when you put out.
The broadcast, yeah.
Yeah, somebody asks us, hey, I hear you've got you're searching for a superintendent.
Then we send them.
Yeah, go to the website.
We can redirect them to the webpage.
Right.
They can call superintendent's office and get the the link to get to the information.
This is the survey and it'll be it's the template and your district will. ASA will put in your district name and. And again, it's anonymous. We do ask their relationship to the district. And that's good data for you. And then the only redacting of the comments. I knew if they if. Their their response would violate open meeting law. For example, if someone named someone. By law, if that's on the document and it's part of the board record. You have to notice that person that they're going to be discussed in a meeting. And it could be false information. And so. And I'll let you know, it's rare that I have had to redact any information. So and I'll let you know ahead of time that I've redacted any information. Okay, are we ready to move into the agenda items?
Yes. Item, going into have item three point one, the governing board will discuss and may consider approving the online superintendent leadership quality. Qualities communicate community survey with a component of the superintendent as a component of the superintendent search process.
So I move that we accept it, the online superintendent leadership qualities, community survey as is, as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Stoner, second by Ms. Rico to approve the. Online superintendent survey as presented. Is there any discussion? Not being any?
No.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Did I get that right, Monica? Okay, moving on to item. Three, two. The governing board will discuss and may consider approving the position announcement to be published on the ASA website. This announcement will include a district profile, community profile, position profile, position salary range, district financial information, timeline and process. There is a lot in there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Why? This is a.
I'd like to discuss a little bit.
Yes.
There's a lot in here. That I think we're all seeing for the first time tonight. Some of it, the district profile, community profile. Timeline, process. The timeline, I think this is where we, Ms. Rico, we can.
Yeah.
See what we can do to adjust to accommodate yours. Does anybody else, any other board members have it handy? Can we bring that those dates back up?
Yep.
It's much easier for me to see my world when I see dates.
While you're doing that, I just have a quick question. I don't know if this is Luciano or with ASA, just from the salary range. Is that like industry, like benchmarking and considering like Arizona and all of that? I mean, I just didn't know how that was.
That's as a starting point right now, based on countywide.
And actions. Discuss a long way all you want. You don't have to wait for a second.
I would like to comment, like I said, this is my 2026, 27th search. And I don't compare clients. Would say that this is one of the finest position announcements. And it is because I sent a template. And your staff, your superintendent and. In a very short period of time, created a very visual, data driven, but understandable. And position announcements make a difference. It communicates your climate, your culture. So I I just can't say enough about the passion and commitment to developing this position announcement that was done by your superintendent and staff.
Luciano and Christine, hopefully.
Never give us a marketing thought because we work.
And for example, that detail about the salary range. I didn't have to do the research because it was already done. Your your HR did that research. And it's more accurate and up to date than my due diligence on that.
Thank you. Those timelines are also in here.
Okay.
Under salary and contract.
Okay, yeah. I'm flipping through all the pages, just to look up.
Yeah, I was looking at the timelines. I didn't know if in thinking about to if we're expecting candidate and let's say they're coming from somewhere outside of Yuma. To expect them to come one week and then come back the next week? I don't know. And I'm also selfishly, because I want to be here, because I've gone the week before. I mean, if we did the 24th instead of the 18th, so that Monday with the board. And then for those that we wanted to keep around, could do the forum a couple of days later, still within that same week. And then we could still make a decision by the end of that week. I didn't know if that was a possibility or if that was it would be a couple of days later. But if we did 324 as candidate interviews with the board, then the finalists with the community may be on Wednesday and then for Thursday. And then we can make a decision by Friday. I mean.
So what's the, I like that. My my government background is different. So, you know, in the government, if one person requests a video or telephone interview, then everybody, whether they sit in the office next to you or not, gets the same type of interview. Is that the same in this situation?
I would recommend that whatever format you use, that it be consistent with all your. I have a bias and it's in person.
I agree.
But that, but with that said, I recommend if you're going to do it Zoom with one person. You have to, in my opinion, my recommendation would be Zoom with everyone, even if somebody was internal.
Right.
And just. And I know you boards think about their applicant pool and and that sort of thing. But candidates are in Arizona, candidates are responsible for their own travel. The you might have heard of, and I I'm not trying to bias this in any way, but national firms. Well, you may have heard that a national firm could pay for somebody's travel expenses. Well, the way they get around the gift of public funds is they charge you that upfront. And correct me if I'm.
Pretty standard.
Yeah. Yeah. And then.
In our world, that's called money laundering.
They paid the travel to to come interview. But in Arizona. ASA does not do that. So it's it's the responsibility of your applicant, if they get invited to an interview. That they have to pay their expenses and. If they get invited to an interview and then get invited to a second interview and they're a week apart. It's it's on your your candidates, your finalists.
And we have the ability at any point leading up to it. If we initially start off and want to do face to face or Zoom and we realize all of our finalists are in the local and the community. We can shift that to an in person at our discretion.
Okay.
I'm kind of old fashioned, but I think if somebody's going to take a job like this and they're not willing to come to the interview. Then what makes you think they're going to come and I'm skeptical as to whether they're going to accept the job and move their family here. I'm, you know, if they're from somewhere else, you'd think they at least want to come and check out the community firsthand before they make a decision like that.
Should we do these in August?
Yeah, I agree. Just to give them a real picture.
That's actually when ideal world, that's when we bring people, let's see if they really like Yuma, we're going to.
Last time around, the timeframe was more like what you just described, where the the formal interview took place and then the community forum was, I think, the next night.
Yeah, it was back to back.
I was just thinking, I mean, again, from the candidate experience, but in general, that if I agree, I think they should should show up. But if we did it to where, you know, they for those that we're going to let down, it's like you could be here for a week or four days or whatever it may be. Or you could be here for one or two, you know, but that they're at least. We go through a process and then I could be here in person versus being via Zoom, but.
And there was a net, there was an out of town finalist that time.
Yeah.
I think that accommodated her.
Yeah.
To have a back to back, so we didn't have to stay quite as long.
I would rather have in person. I can read you better in person than I can on Zoom.
Just to add to the conversation with our our leadership positions, the principal, principal directors, we don't allow Zoom interviews for that.
Right.
They are in person. So just kind of have that continuity of.
Yeah, I think we ought to X the Zoom right away.
That's where my federal government background comes in, because if one candidate requests it, you have to accommodate it. You don't have a choice.
No Zoom.
No Zoom. So we got, so you're looking at the 18th and the 25th, see if we can't compress those.
If you did Monday, the 24th and the community forum on the 26th. That's like a day to let them know, like on Tuesday, if they're if you have four finalists and then you, because the community forum is just the finalists or ideally you would have like two, it's just the finalists. So then you would let whoever know the next day that they're not being considered and the one you would bring to the community forum on the 26th and then you would.
I've seen it done both ways. You know, the last time District One did it, there were four people on the stage for the community forum. And then there was a period of time afterwards where everybody, the the four candidates had to go down and interact with the crowd and not the board. I don't know where they were, but the board members kind of observed the candidates interacting with with the people in the crowd.
And then everybody that participated was given a sheet of paper to give feedback. They would recommend. They would recommend, and that was all given to the facilitator at that time, too.
I think like the chief of the fire department last time, it was like four, and then they kept two, and then they had this community forum, so it was just the two that went, and then from that, they got feedback, and then they picked the one.
Yeah, that would be the board's discretion, is how many they want to move forward.
If we don't, okay.
Individual phase.
Yeah, I think compressing that together, either a day apart or the next. I like twenty-four to twenty-six.
And then as far as the enter into contract, when would we be? Are you wanting that the twenty-seventh, or the twenty, where are we at on that? Who is that?
The twenty-seventh is that, or Thursday, right?
Yeah, Thursday.
Monday, Monday, Monday twenty-fourth, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Twenty-seventh is a Thursday.
Okay.
Is that too fast, or are we, we okay with that?
So let me make sure I've got my notes right. So the candidate interviews with the board, those are the first round. You're looking at three twenty-four, twenty-five. And the time commitment will depend on the number of applicants you move forward. I recommend an hour interview with each. So the time will be, to be determined after the screening. And then what I, the second interview with finalist would be three twenty-six. And the community forum would be.
That evening.
Same day.
That evening.
Same day.
So we're compressing candidate interview first round, looking at all of the applications that originally have a one-week timeline, you're compressing that to two days?
No, we have, the eleventh is when we get the screening, and then we have two weeks now to actually invite. Yeah, so you actually have more time to screen the initial candidates, and then we choose who's actually going to come in for the interviews.
I've updated the dates on the screen here, if you want to see just what, what was being discussed, eleven, twenty-four, twenty-six, just so we can, as a map.
Yeah, because what I'm seeing here on the original, you're saying the eleventh, the eighteen, and the twenty-fifth, there's a one-week timeline between interview and final interview. And now we're saying that we want to do that in two days rather than a week.
Well, there's not anything, we're doing the interviews. And then you.
Make a decision.
Make a decision.
After the interviews.
Then you get the next day, let your brain rest, and then the following day is the.
Kind of digest.
Yes.
The community forum and the. And that's when you, that, that's the, at the community forum, that's when you announce the first, the final, right? If I understand that right?
So the, so you would screen on the eleven.
Yep.
Determine, let's say, I'm just throwing a number out there. Let's say you determine that you're going to do a first interview with five. They now become candidates. Then those five candidates would be interviewed by the board on the twenty-fourth. And then the board would go into open session and determine, let's say, you moved forward two finalists. Then those two finalists would be interviewed by the board on the twenty-sixth.
In an executive session.
In executive session.
Then they go to the community.
Then they would do the community forum that I would facilitate, and I will get your input on. At the screening meeting, we'll talk more about how that community forum looks. So on the twenty-sixth, you have board interview, and exec session, and community forum. And then what I thought I heard was to do a a meeting on another day to deliberate, and then come out in open session and make your decision on a finalist. Is that?
So we'd be adding another date on there, maybe the twenty.
You would add another day, you can do it either way. You could, it's a long day. But you can do it either way. You could do your interview in community forum, and what I do at the community forum is I provide a card to each attendee. And then they give their feedback on that card, I collect all the cards, and I bring that to your exec session and your file deliberation. So that you can consider the feedback from the attendees at the forum.
Right, so there's that, there's that forced gap, is the feedback from the forum.
So we want, we do want it, we do want a little bit of time to then review it, and then we'll meet. But is there like, so let's say we, the forum was on that Wednesday, do you see anything wrong with like on Friday, then when we reconvene, so we have some time to process? And then the second that we make a decision, then legal can then be involved for the contract, we then don't negotiate, or so.
What if the board, the board approves one board member to enter into negotiations with the, with the final.
Okay, the president, okay.
Typically, it is the president.
There's no shyness at that interview table.
Sounded like a recommendation.
That is not a nice sign about tonight, so.
And then the, the contract is brought back to the entire board for a final vote.
Right, and in the past, it's taken about two meetings for that contract to come together. So deliberations between the potential new superintendent and the board representative usually take about two meetings to go back and forth for legal, to give you some context.
So we want to have an idea by that Friday would be good, because that's still kind of meets that week that we have that you have suggested here. So by three twenty-seven.
So would you like three twenty-seven or three twenty-eight, Thursday or Friday to have.
Oh, twenty-eight, sorry.
Your final meeting to deliberate. What I can do is compile the community forum feedback. Email it to the board, to your, Monica. And that would be information for, that you get it advanced to the executive session. Would that?
To be confidential.
It would be a confidential, I think we're okay with doing that. So that you have time to look over.
We would have that twenty-seven to be able to look over, and then if we met on the twenty-eighth, then we'd have the community feedback and our own observations, and then make it, okay?
So you'll be able to compile all of the, the community forum feedback the night of the twenty-seventh? So that we had it.
I'm early, I get, I get up way too early and go to bed way too early. So, yeah, I can.
So we would have the, the, it's not a meeting, the twenty-seventh would be the review of the forum feedback, the twenty-eighth would be the final selection. Twenty-four, twenty-six. I told you guys we're going to have more meetings in the first three months than the board had last year altogether.
It's only one night a month.
Join the board, they said, it's only one.
Go ahead.
It might just be easier to have posters wherever we're going to have the community forum, so people can just scan the QR code with their phone, implement their feedback, and then.
That would be easier for you to.
So it's compiled already for you, and then this way you can share it with the board.
And you can parse it, or you can.
I'm good with that.
It saves you a lot of time.
Yeah.
And then I would only bring one card, because what I do is I give out two cards. And one card is if the attendees would like to submit a question to be asked during the forum. And then what I do is I collect all those, I do a quick sort, putting them in themes, and then put the ones that are illegal to ask at the bottom. And then I, I'm upfront, I tell folks, thanks for all the questions, but I'm not going to get to all the questions. So it's not an open mic. You don't come and, and surprise us all with a question that isn't a question. So I, that's how I facilitate, and this, having them do it would be huge for me.
You might want to have some cards in case anybody wants to write. You might have a handful of people that aren't going to use their phone. But overwhelmingly, you're going to get most of your work done by the QR code.
That would be great.
Okay, so I think that, that gives us first interview on the twenty-fourth. Final interview and community forum on the twenty-sixth. It's not a meeting, but we will review the forum feedback on the twenty-seventh, make our final selection on the twenty-eighth. Does that sound right with everybody?
Yes.
And that works for everybody's calendar?
Selection.
Putting it on the family calendar now.
And we'll work with the board and with your. With staff. From Monica to set times. And again, depends on the number of candidates that you select would be. We, I also recommend, and again, this is totally up to the board, I, I would also recommend on that final interview day that we schedule a tour of the district that is close, the board would not be involved in that, it would be whatever staff you choose, your superintendent and leadership team. And it would, let's say, the interview is at two. The tour for that finalist would be at noon to one. So I do, and we can talk more about this at the next meeting, but that'll be, that's one of my recommendations, is to build that in to the finalist schedule.
What do we have on the twenty-seventh?
That's when we're going to be able to get his feed, the feedback from the community forum, yeah. So we'll get a review it, and then, so we should feel more prepared on the twenty-eighth to make our final.
Yep, and that one's not, the twenty-seventh is not a meeting, that's us looking through our.
It's an email, confidential email we'll get.
Thank you so much.
So you put that on the timeline then, right? I don't see the twenty-seventh there.
Luciano. You put the twenty-seventh as a, as a reflection day for.
Forum feedback.
Please, I think.
Absolutely. Put it there, not a meeting.
How about individual reflection?
There you go.
So I'm going to put those counter invites, like, I'm going to send you guys counter invites, did that help?
Perfect, yes, yes. Even though I may show up in early.
Only live by one on my calendar. But if you send it to both, it would be greatly appreciated.
So now we have to vote on that, though, right? We need to, okay.
I'm slacking. Trying to get caught up.
So those, those days all look good.
Community profile, position profile. District financial timeline, and that's, when we talked about the profiles, right, that's the district profile, priorities and goals. Right, this is, these are the documents that we're getting ready to discuss.
Make a motion and, yeah.
And again, we added a lot of information, so if you want to edit anything or take something out, we certainly can do that, we just wanted to give you more information to, to work with.
I really like that. Like, and the narrative questions at the, this is going to be added.
So the narrative, we have a separate agenda item.
Okay, we'll talk.
The narrative is.
The, those questions will be placed in the application. So when you do your screening, you're going to be able to get samples of their writing.
So that's agenda item, action item number three?
Yeah.
Okay, but right now, we're kind of.
So right now, you're just dealing with the, voting on the posting.
Okay.
Okay, and that is the, the position profile requirements, correct? I'll take a minute to read through it.
I'm going to have you help me, Luciano, write our job postings, because it's pretty, pretty thorough.
Christiane, it was a team effort, so.
I love it. Maybe that's what we need to do, we need to work with our comms department more to actually.
Yeah, she's amazing.
Yeah.
Her eyes lit up when I asked her if she'd.
Well, looks good.
Can I close my door? I have a question I'm not sure about. I know that reciprocity between states is pretty, pretty easy for teachers, is it same thing for superintendent's certificates? If somebody were from another state and had, had a ballot certificate there, is reciprocity pretty, pretty routine?
Yes, and it is, if we write that the language like is written, as long as we get some documentation that the applicant is applying for. Let's say the, the board picks a finalist that is out of state. The board can work with their attorney on putting language in the contract that provides a timeline. At the end of this two-year contract, you know. To get a superintendent certificate, if you're, if you don't have any credits that will transfer, it's, it's twenty-four credits, I believe.
Sixty, it's actually sixty now.
What is it?
Sixty graduate credits now.
Six, zero.
Six, zero.
All from the start, yeah.
That's all the way through your, from masters.
They figured masters was thirty-six.
They changed it, it used to be twenty-four, but now it's sixty, so.
See?
Have you ever had, have you ever had a board put an interim certificate as well as part of the, the process as an option?
I have not.
Okay.
But the, but I have had boards write that through there with their legal counsel, give a, a, by this date, or by this, yeah, you will have the certificate, and if not, you know. So again, they have to provide either. again, they have to provide either a copy of their certificate or evidence that they're applying, some type of statement that they're in the process of applying. And again, my understanding is the reciprocity is. Arizona has reciprocity with many states.
Okay. One of the things, I've been spending too many hours researching superintendents. One of the questions I have for you is, here in Yuma County for superintendent positions, you said you did it for Yuma Union High School, a few other places. What does the average applicant number count?
Great question. I have to be cautious that I'm not telling you a number and.
Well, you can give me a range, right? One to ten, ten to twenty, twenty to fifty.
So, right, right now, I can give you some comps. Avondale, which is an elementary district in Phoenix, had twenty-two applicants. I just did, and it's part of the open board record, so I'm not, I, I'm finishing up Toltec. And they had nine. Of those nine, three were applying for teaching positions from overseas. So.
Misunderstood the posting.
For your, for your small rural districts, the average has been about seven, seven to eight. For your urban districts, it's been all over the place.
Yeah, it's just a very key, I mean, critical and high-level position, but it's also in an area that if you're not from here, you, it's, you're moving your family and yourself, I mean, it's a recruitment thing.
Oh, yeah, I think you and I know very.
We all love Yuma, but.
I get the.
Others.
Tucson Unified School District, five, six years ago, and they had seventeen.
It's a pretty big.
I can't remember how many Somerton had.
Probably wasn't seventeen. Not just, I mean, across the board, I mean, if we get seven to ten, we're probably doing really good.
Yeah.
Those are proxy seventeen, how many were local from the area?
The seventeen in Tucson Unified, they had four that were working, either had worked in the district or, and had just moved or worked in the district.
A little bit of an unorthodox, so I spent a lot of time, I started with researching Arizona school superintendent hiring processes. Just trying to get prepared for what we're about to do, because I've never been involved in it. Jamie's been around for a while, longer than I have, so, never got to observe the process. I start going through the qualifications and requirements, and a number of state or schools have opted out of the superintendent certification, because it's not a requirement from the state. I understand it's a very desired certification. However, my proposal to the board is removing that. It opens it up to higher-level admin folks. You still have to have, I mean, you can't be a first-year teacher and have experience, but you may have folks that have a lot of other valuable experience that can be considered. Since we're not talking about hundreds of applications, I think it's well worth the investment to look into things like that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So moving on to dates, I'll just send you guys calendar invites. So on March eleventh is board meeting night. So we better talk about screening. Are you guys going to screen before the board meeting, in the morning? Or what's, how, I mean, how did that happen?
And those are, those are done all face-to-face, right? That's not take-home.
Screening is a paper screener. So it's an executive session that could be.
So we could do an executive session before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
That has to be early, like.
Morning, like three o'clock or.
Earlier, because, yeah. We don't want to do to the public, like, last time we had gone into executive session at five-thirty and got out at seven-thirty.
I think that was halftime.
Yeah. So earlier or, I mean, are you, are you guys, that's a Tuesday, are you guys, do you want to do a full day? I don't know, Corey, I know you have a job, and Jeff, you have a business.
No, I can, because I work on the calendar, so I could send that, I was just kind of catching that, I didn't know what time it was.
Because we're going to kind of back up to that.
Great question. It also depends on the number of applicants you have.
If you get three, it's pretty quick.
So I guess we don't have to determine that, we know we have to do it that day, but if we had seven or ten, we may want to do it at nine versus a.
Does it have to be on the eleventh, or can we do it sooner?
Well, we'll know, right? So the deadline for the application is on the 28th, so we should know at twelve oh one, on the 28th, how many we have. Or if it's four, then we know we can just set aside, you know, thirty minutes an applicant to, to screen through them, forty-five minutes an applicant to screen through them. And we're not making the assessment, we're just racking and stacking them and deciding how many off the top we're going to take with us to the next phase.
My recommendation for the screening, in order to, again, protect the board, I develop a rubric based on the position profile and the community survey. And then you use that rubric to do your paper, your, your paper screen. It's a, you develop a score, but, and you only share the score with me, you don't share it with others, because that could be considered voting. And then I take the score and develop your top candidates. And then you discuss, you're not locked into that, it just is a starting point. But for your minutes, you include that rubric, a blank one, in your minutes, so that if, if you ever got a job action post, post-hire, where somebody said, you didn't, you didn't fairly screen my application. You pull out the documentation with the rubric. You don't have the, the filled-in rubric, but you have the rubric, and we have documentation that every candidate, every applicant was scored, and that protects you.
Do we have any influence on that rubric?
Pardon?
Influence on that rubric as far as score weights? And the reason I bring that up is because I think those that are within District One have firsthand knowledge, experience of the operations, and that gives them an upper hand by themselves, just being a member of District One.
So there is a part of the rubric that is weighted, and it's best fit.
Okay, good, it falls right in there.
And that is certain point score that is weighted based on, let's say, degree, earning a degree, you know. That's weighted less than that best fit.
Gotcha, okay.
I think that addresses.
Yes, it does. So we have, after the 28th, the board can then, if we have to get together to figure out if we need to adjust the executive session for the review, what are we calling it? Screening, yeah, the screening, so that way, you know, if on the 28th we find out we have thirty to look at, we're going to maybe set aside two days, two evenings to get it taken care of, whatever we need to do. But if it comes down to we've got six, or four, or three, whatever it is, we'll have a better idea after the 28th, before the 11th, to make that decision. So no reason to stress ourselves out about being here from six to six.
This is a side note.
Six AM to seven PM, lock it off.
I think we had a request from board member.
Yeah, I think he's doing it. Luciano is doing it right now. He's updating that.
All right, so we got that covered, so then back to my recommendation with the board.
So legally, in Arizona, is it not required?
It's a board decision.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a couple thoughts, I guess, on that. One, that really, I guess, as a parent, sticks out to me is the optics in public perception. We all know that public education is under a lot of scrutiny, and there's lots of statements, especially in the community, about our capacity and qualifications of our teachers and parents, and, and I hear it. So I guess I, one worry I have is the optics of the community, but really more importantly, of staff, parents, as well as the community, so I think it reinforce, reinforces accountability by having that. I think the other piece from, I guess, recruiter and someone in HR, we have to oftentimes, in my day job, push some of these expectations aside in qualifications, and more often than not, there's consequences to it, and it's hard, once we hire them, to kind of go back from that. So to me, it signals like readiness, it signals that, I think there's, not I think, I know, that there is a level of navigating very complex educational situations at that level. And so I'm worried that if, having someone that I think has the bones and the foundation to do it, if we put him in a role that they are not quite equipped or don't have experience as an associate superintendent, or they haven't gone through the process, that it's, that's going to be hard. But I also recognize, again, that by having that requirement, it may limit our candidate pool. And so, to me, I guess, though I don't want to prolong anything, I guess my question is, is that should we get to that stage where we are just not happy with the candidates that have come in? Like, is there an opportunity to recalibrate and say, okay, we need to open this back up, and maybe we need to change the wording to, it is highly preferred that they have this? I don't know. I just, for me, I worry about the things I just talked about on the initial post, because we haven't even seen what candidate pool comes in. So do we have time, do we have the ability to recalibrate come the 28th or whenever that closes, to say, you know what, as a board, we don't, we don't think that this is enough, a good enough pool? I don't know.
It really constraints the timeline, it puts us an entire month behind. Including, or excluding that requirement, there's four layers of review, both, most of those are the board, but you also have the public forum, right? So that, if a candidate without a superintendent certification makes it to the first, through the first review and goes to the forum, and the public's screaming, no, I mean, the board has to take that into consideration, right? So there's the initial review.
Well, I guess we do, but we don't really, because we have the vote, I mean, at the end.
The same as we have the vote on the, whether or not the certificate's in there.
Yeah, exactly, that's where, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, if we're going to be conscious of the public, if the public doesn't make the outcry in the public forum, because a candidate who's not a traditional superintendent stands out enough where the public gets behind them, you've got that there. The other side of that is, is it going to open it up for more? I don't know, but having that certification has always been a traditional way, but it is starting to break from that. And so I think there's enough review process in there to, to, the interview, wouldn't, I think through an interview process, you're going to find out how well they're able to handle being a superintendent. And it just depends, right? I mean, you've got third-year teacher, doesn't have experience, you know, that doesn't just automatically open it up to somebody who was a teacher for a couple of years and says, oh, it's time for me to step up. There has to be something else, you have to have some sort of another background. You may have somebody who's a CEO at a company and decided to go into administration, and then, you know, that's, that'd be a prime candidate, right? So I think it opens it up, but there's enough levels of review in that process to include the public to get the feel of what they're saying. I didn't mean to cut you off, Joe.
No, no, that's fine. I agree with what Corey's saying as far as you want, you know, the top class act, you want that educated person. I think that we do need to say preferred rather than required, because.
Highly preferred for this, but then again, if you have that stellar candidate that doesn't, but is, I also, and I don't know if this is the place for it, but going back to the, I think you had brought up, Jeff, earlier, about the, like, writing in the contract, like, let's say you have someone that is highly qualified, but it's not quite done. I think you brought up the interim. I know that what we've done at work is where we write it in the contract, that you are expected in the next, I mean, depending on how far away they are from it, that they're going to engage in that process. So we have some, as a board, we have the ability to say, okay, we still want you to go through it, because there's benefit of going through the process of getting it and getting educated in this superintendent, but I think that that's fine, Jeff.
Yeah, I like that we say it was preferred, because in my line of work, I've had certificate electricians come straight out of AWC. They know everything on paper, you put the tools in their hands, and they have no idea what they're doing. And I fired them in the first week. I would rather have somebody that has field experience, I would rather have somebody that knows what they're doing. Maybe they don't have the certificate, but to me, the certificate that has no match to experience. I'm one of those. I own my own business. I am not a degreed electrician. I'm a licensed, state-licensed certified electrician, but I didn't go through the schooling and get all the degrees and do all of those things that they're doing now, these certificate electricians. So I'm living proof that you don't have to have that to be successful and to know what you're doing. And so I would really like, I would be interested in a lot to find out those people that don't have a certificate that might be overqualified or might be even more qualified than that certificate person. And I don't want to close the, close the door on those people that might, if you put down required versus then preferred, they're not going to apply, and we're closing the door on that opportunity for them.
I guess they still can, because you said that there was teachers that were applying for them.
They, they knew that, they weren't applying for the superintendent.
They, yeah, they didn't realize they were.
Didn't realize it, it, you know, and one, in one sense, it showed the reach of the Indeed and the platform. On the other hand, there was some clarity, communication issue with the posting, because in their initial letter, they said, I'm applying for a teaching position.
I have that, I have an ad out right now on Indeed for adjournment electrician, I'm getting forklift drivers applying. So it's the same, it's, they're just not leaving them out when they send you that.
So we all, I mean, I like the idea of preferred.
Yes.
We change that to preferred. Preferred, highly preferred?
I like highly preferred, but again, it doesn't make it a requirement, it's emphasizing we want it, and I'm.
So highly preferred requirements of applicants for preferred.
Highly preferred.
Highly preferred, unless somebody can come up with a better adjective.
That's a word that I use in my one when we need to tweak it.
Yeah, let them know, that, that just lets them know that, that cert, the certification has, has an impact, especially on the rubrics.
So that would be for the superintendent certification?
Yeah. We have all of this.
This, it's something small, but this highlighted one on the back page to receive consideration.
Oh, yeah, we filled that in, that's, that's the date.
Okay, okay.
We were waiting for the board to finalize the timeline.
Cool, cool, okay.
And that'll be twelve noon.
Okay.
On the 28th.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was.
We'll put that in. We'll put that in.
Okay.
We're just waiting.
Okay.
Until the board finalize the timeline.
Mr. Shalva, on the salary range, is that all-inclusive, or is that just?
Not base.
Base, okay, so that is base salary, okay. There it goes, online application.
Do you say motion or move when you're?
Move.
I move to approve the position announcement, including the profile, community profile, position profile, position salary range, district financial information, timeline with the changes discussed, as well as a change in the requirements specific to the Arizona superintendent certification to be highly preferred versus possessed. Give me a first.
I second, I'm glad to.
The motion was moved by Ms. Rico, second by Mr. Abara. All those, and any, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to three point three, the government board will discuss and may consider incorporating specific questions into the application process for the position of district superintendent. Is that, the narrative questions?
Yeah.
President, members of the board, these questions would be part of the application, which gives you an opportunity during the screening to assess writing.
And thinking, writing is thinking.
Yeah. And I had a discussion with your superintendent, and we're gonna recommend that we add a requirement that the answers not be utilizing AI.
Yes.
How are you gonna figure that out?
You can run a thing.
Can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can run it through.
You're caught. Don't worry, you're allowed to use it, you are allowed to, I mean, in most cases, so when they say that, yeah, there's even like in colleges now, they have a way to.
I think that's, I think that's fantastic.
I.
You don't want to have somebody blow you away on paper and with their writing, and then turn around.
I want to hear what they have to say.
For what I scribble on this piece of paper, ChatGPT makes.
Yeah.
In our most recent interviews for coordinator, we put, because there was an extensive readiness, I mean, we put, it is expected that you don't use AI, internet, or, or out, or other outside resources.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And that lets them know that it'll be checked.
And some of that is just integrity.
Can you add that, or other outside sources, resources?
Right.
I, I don't know. One of the pieces, and again, it's not gonna, if there's local people, they are here in Yuma. I know for me, it's been a, not a weed-out, but a, a way to assess someone's, like, knowledge of where they would be moving. So if it's someone that says, oh, well, I saw San Diego's close to Yuma, like, I wanted, I'll go to Yuma, and I'm like, we are vastly different. I don't know if that's a, a question that you can say, you know, or not, obviously, are you aware of this role within Yuma, Arizona? And I, I don't know, I don't know if that's, I ask that a lot and say, and that would require a relocation, should you not live in Yuma? And then there's a comment box where they can say, yes, I'm willing, or, you know, I've done some research.
They asked him for like question number six, what are the attributes of Yuma that have drawn you to want to be in Yuma?
The community, yeah, I guess you could even say, yeah, I think that's, because, and some people say, I saw it on a map, and you're like, okay, well, we probably need to, and that's not, doesn't mean that we disqualify them, but they need to understand, because when you move a family here, or you move someone here, retention, that's huge. And so it's one thing to hire a superintendent, but it's another thing to, like, keep.
Don't use us as a stepping stone.
Yeah, and number three, I just thought about maybe, it's one thing to know your leadership style, but it's another thing to be self-aware enough in like how that shows up with others that you're leading, and so I didn't know if there's a way to, like, word, I don't care how the wording is, maybe AI can help us in that. Describe your leadership style and like how you adapt to different styles of your staff or your other ones, because it's one thing to say, I'm like this and that's who I am, but as a leader, you need to be able to recognize that if your people don't have the same.
You looking for conflict specifically, or just?
Well, I think just to, like, if I have someone that is really introverted, and I'm an extrovert, that as a leader, I need to recognize that they're not gonna communicate in the way that I do. And it doesn't mean they're a bad employee, or they actually fill a gap, they will be quiet more than I will, and so it's something I can learn. And so to me, it shows a little bit of awareness, if someone actually knows how they show up and how do they.
Ask a little bit more to get them, maybe.
Especially if they're writing it, but, I mean, I'm not attached to any of those things, those are just too.
I think something like that to kind of clarify or to push it to the next level, because sometimes with that question, people will actually use like a textbook.
Yes.
Leadership style, like, I fit this style of leadership.
I'm authoritarian and like.
Yeah, it's almost always servant, right?
Yeah, servant leader.
Oh, yeah, I'm like, oh, sometimes that's.
I'll never ask anybody to do anything that I won't do, it's like, well.
One question we asked for Dorothy Hall was, what are your top three leadership qualities? And how do they align to the culture of Dorothy Hall School, right? So you can kind of tell something like that, top, top three leadership qualities, and how do they align to District One?
I like that.
Do they do the research?
Question number seven.
Leadership style.
How do you get it?
So, how do your leadership, how does your leadership style? Yeah, align with, complement the school district and community? Because then again, it gets, keeps them engaged in the, about Yuma, right? If they don't know anything except for we're two and a half hours from the beach, two hours from San Diego, they won't know how their leadership is going to come into play with our community, our children, and the staff.
And then force them to do some research about the district too.
Yeah.
Right, it comes out, the extent of the research that they did comes out through a prompt like that.
So up in the yellow, I'm sorry, Corey, up in the, in the highlighted, the very first one, that other outside resources, they would have to use an, an outside resource.
They'd have to use our website.
I'm just making it know the conversation we can, yeah.
Yeah, you can clarify.
I understand AI, but then at that point, then they have to use, they have to use something beyond.
They'd have to use our website.
We'll just say paper and pencil only.
Like the old days, right? You come in and you do it right here, I'm watching you.
Open your green book now.
Still got some of those pencil grinders?
Oh, yeah.
I think that's enough question, I mean, because they're doing this like in a, I mean, the rest of the questions I would want to ask in the interview.
And, and I wouldn't dock somebody if they pulled information from the school site. I would not consider that outside resource, I wouldn't consider that outside resource, yeah. I would, I would hope that whoever's applying for it understands, when we say outside, we're not talking, the school district is not outside, an outside resource.
And maybe you just clarify any, whatever word you can call, like.
Can you say?
Writing helper, writing tools, there you go, writing, yes, yeah.
Other supportive writing programs.
Okay, yeah, other similar resources, yep, because they'll call them something else.
There might be one out there that's lost.
Well, there's, yeah, there's all kinds of.
Gemini, so don't use ChatGPT.
Yeah. I think that's good.
We've added one, good. Yeah, I like number six. Okay, and that is all of this with additions. So we have, any more discussion on this? The motion?
Motion to accept.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
Second, move by Mr. Abara, second by Ms. Rico, to approve the narrative questions with the changes. I need to read those. As we've discussed, we've got it highlighted there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Anybody have, any questions as we go? Because the next item is to adjourn, I don't want to adjourn, if anybody has any looming questions, any comments, or. Buckle up, it's gonna be a ride.
You were talking about finance of bringing them in, that's only for people in Arizona that they're not paying, or they're paying their own way, what about people outside?
Arizona can't pay for it.
That's what I meant, Arizona's paying their own way.
Everybody's on their own.
And this is a nationwide search, so everybody else outside of Arizona, we, we got the tab.
No, no, no.
They're on their own too.
Because ASA is Arizona-based, they legally.
It would be a gift of public funds, we can't, we can't give public funds to an individual.
Okay, so we're not, we're not funding any of it.
Arizona will not allow us to pay for anything.
That's what I wanted, okay, I wanted to make sure, because that's, yeah, I didn't have that clear, I thought it was only Arizona.
No further questions or comments, I will adjourn the meeting.